All right. Good evening and welcome to the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. Happy New Year, everyone. Can everyone hear me before I go any further? Can you guys hear us?
I can hear you.
So, so the first item on the agenda is a six o'clock P M. Executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Motion would be needed to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to deliberate upon matters which, if done in open meeting, could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to collective bargaining, to come out of executive session and reconvene in an open meeting. Will have to be done by a roll call vote. So as Chair, I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body relative to collective bargaining and that the Board will come out of executive session and reconvene in an open session. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
This has been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffler?
Did you call mine for me?
No, I said, uh, Mrs. Ruffler.
Does she have a mute on?
She has mute. I didn't see her move though. Sarah? Maybe she can't hear us because there's not a here. Sarah's muted. Hold on. Their message. Sarah, can you hear us at all? Sarah, can you hear us? That was me. Never mind. Uh, she says she can't.
I can't hear anybody. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
So it must be on my end. Let me see if I can figure it out.
You're okay now, Sarah.
I think I figured it out.
Okay. You can hear us now?
Yes. Thanks.
Uh, so a motion was made by Lon to go into executive session and then seconded by Dan. Um, it's a roll call vote, so I called you first, so, um.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Uh, Mr. Berthley?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. All right. Thanks, everyone. I'll see you upstairs. Uh, welcome back, everyone. We got an executive session. Um, moving on, we have Agenda Item Three, to reconvene in an open session. Um, and state of pledge allegiance. I guess I will stand and say the pledge here.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, under public comment. I don't think we have any.
No.
Something wrong with all of you?
Oh.
Uh, under public hearings and presentations, we have none. Communications, we have a discussion on the nomination to name the new sunroom addition to the Auburn Public Library, the Dr. Arthur and the Dr. Martha Pappas Room, uh, and a potential hearing date. So with that.
Sorry.
I'm going to get upset. Um, I'll hand it over to the town manager to talk a little bit about it. Members do have a, uh, a letter in your packets, um, from the library director regarding, uh, the name change. Are you good?
Yes, am I? Yes, you can hear. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you can see, uh, we have a letter in, in the packet from Jean Collins, who's our library director, and she's also a town resident. And she has made a proposal to have the Board consider naming the soon-to-be new sunroom addition at the library, the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas, uh, addition, uh, room, excuse me. And the reason for that is the enormous amount of financial support that we have received from the Pappas Foundation, as well as from Mrs. Pappas, uh, or Dr. Martha Pappas individually. And I know you all have the letter, but for the public, we have received a grant, actually two grants, that totaled six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars toward the Auburn Public Library slash Gaudy Park slash pedestrian bridge project. And within that, that is funding the library addition, the pedestrian bridge, the improvements to Gaudy Park at approximately fifty percent of the project cost. Initially, that was a five hundred and five thousand dollar grant, but we had to go back to the Pappas Foundation recently and seek another hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of the sprinkler system that's going to be required at the library once we put the addition on. And the Pappas Foundation and their Board of Trustees reviewed the application for additional funds and supported it wholeheartedly.
I can hear you, Ed. I can hear you, but I can't hear the meeting.
Okay. The meeting's not, has not started yet, I don't believe.
Oh, okay. I see Julie.
I don't think, uh, Rich or Ms. Chris Hugo, I think he's, I don't think they opened up the meeting yet.
Okay. Thanks, Ed.
Okay. I'll let you know if something's wrong, all right?
Okay. Thank you. Take it.
See if it's red. Oh, oh, this is, okay. There you go. Okay.
So maybe let Ed know that we're all set now and see if Ed can mute his.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see if it's right in his office, so just so we don't hear Ed and that we unmuted this, right?
Yeah, you, you guys can hear us now, right? Ed, Ed.
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. So, oh, I started the meeting thinking that everyone could hear, um, and we went through everything. So I'm, I'm sorry, everyone. Um, we were already on Agenda Item, uh, uh, six. It was going pretty fast. So, um, yeah, exactly. No one else can participate. Um, should have more meetings like that.
I, I can, I can just summarize it again. We were only admitted into it.
Yeah, sure. So you guys missed it. I even did the pledge by myself. All right. Uh, so, uh, Agenda Item Six is the discussion to, uh, uh, name the sunroom at the Auburn Public Library. And I pointed out that members have the letter in their packets from the library director, uh, as well as the Board policy. So, uh, and with that, I turn it over to the town manager. So I'm sorry.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. That's okay. It'll probably come out better the second time. Um, so we, you have a letter in your packet from Jean Collins, who's our library director, as well as a town of Auburn resident. And she has nominated the, uh, nominated for consideration of the Board per your policy for the Board to consider the nomination, to name the soon-to-be new sunroom addition, the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Room. And the reason for this, number one is, uh, per your policy, you have a requirement that, you know, there'd be a nomination made and that the Board would then schedule a public hearing to take public input on that. So requesting that you would consider doing that and setting that up for a future meeting, at which point the library director indicated if you do that, she's more than happy to come in and speak to this. I can tell you, I, I wholeheartedly support this. The Pappas Foundation has been extremely generous to the town overall, but I would say the new library sunroom addition, I would say without question, would not be able to come to fruition if it wasn't for the Pappas Foundation. Initially, we had applied for five hundred and five thousand dollars in grants from the Foundation to support our one point zero one zero, um, project, which was, consists of the Auburn, uh, library sunroom addition, the pedestrian bridge to connect to Gaudy Park and the Gaudy Park improvements. And it came to light when we started to do. Can you hear?
Can you hear?
Yeah.
I can't hear a word anybody's saying. I mean, I, I can hear you, but I can't make out anything that's being said.
Take off your mask, yeah.
If I talk.
There's no way. I had a hard time hearing you. I'm just having a hard time hearing anybody.
Okay.
Lionel, if I talk without my mask and into this microphone here, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's a lot better. Thank you.
Okay. No, thanks for saying it, and I'm sorry, I should have taken the mask off. We're all, we're all separated. For anyone's now, so.
Part of a part.
Yep, I think it's, I think it's fine. Um, so the memo that you have before you is a recommendation from Jean Collins, library director and town resident, to have the Board consider naming the soon-to-be new sunroom addition, the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha, Martha Pappas Room. Uh, the reason for that, and again, I, I concur with the recommendation, this sunroom addition would not be possible without the funding made available through the Pappas Foundation. We, uh, Ed and I had applied to the Pappas Foundation initially for five hundred and five thousand dollars for the Auburn Library Gaudy Park Pedestrian Bridge Project. It was fifty percent of the funding. Town meeting generously approved the rest of the funding. We went back recently to the, uh, Foundation as we informed the Board and received another hundred and fifty thousand dollars specifically for the sprinkler system that the new addition is going to trigger, which would be in the entire library because currently there is no sprinkler system and it wasn't required at the time. And it is now with a new addition going on. So we've received a total of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars toward that three-tiered project. Additionally, Dr. Martha Pappas, Mrs. Pappas, just recently, within the last couple of weeks, donated fifty thousand dollars through the Friends of the Auburn Public Library to be directed towards specific furnishings and equipment for both the new sunroom addition and the children's room. So the level of generosity of the Pappas family has been incredible. And again, the sunroom will be going on there. We would not be putting the sunroom on without the ability to access fifty percent of the funding through the Pappas Foundation. So per your policy, the Board would then schedule a public hearing to take, uh, public comment or input and discuss the nomination that would be for you. So that's where it stands now. The library director has offered to come in, should you decide you want to have the hearing on this, per your policy, and move forward on it, at least to get the public input. Let us know, and the library director will be available. Any questions on this, Ed or I can certainly answer the questions from a financial standpoint as well.
Uh, do Board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carpenter?
Um, just a general question. This is the library. Has the, has the Board of Trustees been asked in any way to support this? Or what is, what has been the communication between the Director and the Board of Trustees prior to the nomination?
Uh, through the Chair, I, I don't know that the Director has had the opportunity to talk about it with the Board of Trustees since she submitted this letter. Uh, just, I know per the Board of Selectmen's policy, the nomination has to come from a resident, which is why, uh, the library director made the nomination. Obviously, the Board of Trustees are residents too, understand. The Board of Trustees is meeting on, uh, January eighteenth with, with you as a joint meeting. That meeting was posted, I believe it's at this point going to have to be a hundred percent remote, but the meeting was posted to take the vote on the filling of vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees. At that point, if, you know, when we post your meeting, it's already been posted, but we could post a revised, uh, meeting agenda to put on their proposal for naming the addition and get their feedback if the Board is interested. Or I think based on the Board's policy, the Board of Trustees could also make comment at the public hearing that the Board of Selectmen had. We're willing to do it.
I mean, I, I, I get the policy says from the public, but I think that's too close of a reading. I mean, this is the Board of Library Trustees. They're, they're a public body, and it is a building that they have considerable responsibility for promoting. So for me anyways, um, you know, it would be nice to know that they support this and, you know, that this was done in concert with them so that we can, you know, increase dialogue between the Director and the Trustees and, and something that hopefully is a, a very positive step for the town.
Through the Chair, I'm happy to, uh, talk with the library director when I get that opportunity and happy to, uh, send this letter, if you're okay with this, to the Board of Trustees, um, and ask for their feedback to provide to me, uh, individually that I could then share with this Board or you could put it on an agenda. I'm just trying to think of how to do this out of the, you know, for them to have this discussion, they would have to have a board meeting to have this discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Carpenter. So, um, it's, it's been difficult, um, trying to schedule a meeting. So I know that the, the Library Trustees have had trouble, um, getting together. So it, would you, um, rather have them submit, you know, individual, uh, opinions? Or I, I think the best way to do it would be to add it to our January eighteenth, uh, agenda and then, um, solicit their feedback then, um, since we're going to have them there. Um, but what are your thoughts on, on how to do it?
First and foremost, I, I would defer to the Library Trustees how they want to run their own meeting. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna suggest that anything, you know, it would be cleaner if we could just make a request that they add it to their agenda. I know their meeting that night and, uh, you know, just make a request of that Board that they do do that. And then at our next meeting, potentially, we would have that letter in hand and we could schedule a hearing. That would be my preference, but, uh. Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Berthley?
Yeah, I, I don't think, you know, we have any, uh, emergency on this. I think, uh, Mr. Carpenter is correct. Let's, let's, uh, you know, send it back over to, um, let the Trustees put it on their agenda. Um, you know, and I think we're ninety-nine percent sure that, that everything's gonna fly with this. Um, but, uh, you know, we definitely want to hear, uh, if there's any reason why, you know, they wouldn't want to or why they do want to. I think it's important for us to hear from, from that Board. And, uh, you know, if, if this takes an extra month, I, I don't think that, that necessarily a problem, uh, to, to do things the right way. So I think we should, uh, not take any action on this, uh, tonight ourselves and just, um, you know, maybe just request, uh, that, uh, the Library Board of Trustees puts it on their agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I was just looking at our, at the calendar and, um, if we ask them to take it up on, on the eighteenth, actually, I'll ask the town manager if they can, since the agenda has to be posted, um, in advance for, for that meeting. But, um, we have our meeting, next meeting on the twenty-fourth, so if they take it up then, then it, it wouldn't even postpone it, um, that far for when we'd actually be able to start scheduling a hearing. Um, now, I know our joint meeting has to be scheduled seven days in advance, but for their, if this is just for their agenda, that just has the regular forty-eight. Okay.
Correct. There's, uh, my understanding is, and I would have to check with the town clerk, but my understanding is that there's the joint meeting scheduled on the eighteenth. Uh, I think for six o'clock, don't. Seven? Okay. Great. And I believe the Board of Trustees is scheduling their own meeting to follow that meeting at seven thirty. So I, so they will have another meeting that night. Whether they want to add this would be, you know, they may want to add it at a meeting in February. Uh, again, I agree with all the comments from Mr. Burton and Mr. Carpenter. There's no immediate rush on this. I put it on the agenda because I received it, um, about a week ago. So I wanted to make sure that you had it. It was under, um, you know, it's, it's under communications because it just came in. I, I think that's a completely appropriate way to proceed with this.
Okay. All right. Um, is there anything else from, uh, any other Board members? All right, seeing that, so we'll, we'll reach out to the library Board. Moving on, under Agenda Item Seven, we have gift acceptances in accordance with Mass General Law. Um, I don't think we, we have any. No. We have none. Proclaimations and recognitions, we have none. Um, amend the plastic bag extension request process. Um, so that was a request at the last meeting to look at, um, the process and to avoid having, um, business members come in and talk to us every time that there's a, um, a question or an application for an extension. So with that, I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Through the Chair, uh, I, I believe Mr. Carpenter had asked to put this
Oh, yes.
on the agenda. We're happy, I, I see Darlene Coyle, I'm just turning around here. I see Darlene Coyle, uh, Public Health Director and D D I S Director, is on the call to speak. She's in her office, but we're trying to get everybody safe in their own offices. Uh, so if there are any questions, I know at one of your last meetings, I don't recall if it was the last meeting or the meeting before that, this topic had come up when the Board, this Board was considering the, approving the extension request of a local business for compliance. And at that time, there was a lot of discussion as to why it was coming to the Board of Selectmen instead of the Board of Health and instead of D D I S. And I think there was no vote taken on it, but I know there was discussion on whether it could or should be handled by D D I S. So I think we would, town administration's open to whatever the Board, however you'd like to handle this, uh, generally as the, you know, the licensing authority, a lot of things do go to you. But again, this is a bylaw and the enforcement of it falls on the Board of Health. So whatever this Board's pleasure is as far as handling extension requests, uh, we're, we're certainly hoping to any of them, but we would give you a direction. Right, right now, it's just been set up this way. There's no policy on it. There's no, uh, guidelines. This is just, it, it, I believe, uh, Darlene had come to the Board seeking approval, thinking that the Board would want to, and the form is in there. And we also had sought Board, I think, input on the, on the form or approval on the form.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we had. Um, okay. So with that, I actually want to go to, um, any Board members that, uh, you know, have any comments regarding, um, changing the process or, um.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, if I can be heard on this.
Sure.
So I went back and I looked at the bylaw because I, I know we didn't vote for any sort of policy. We, we did, as a Board, support the bylaw through town meeting. And, and the bylaw specifically designates the Board of Health as the enforcement agent, as well as the promulgator of, of the policies related to the bylaw. So our role, according to the bylaw, is, is not to grant or not grant. It's, it's really a Board of Health issue as to how the Board of Health wishes to proceed with, you know, how to handle these situations. So, so for me, you know, I would, uh, leave it up to the Board of Health as to how they wish to address extension requests if they want to, you know, delegate to staff, which would be my preference, you know, make sure that it's an electronic form so that people don't have to drop things off, don't have to fax things, you know? It's a lot easier sending a PDF. It doesn't get lost as easily, you know? It's usually somewhere. So, so to me, I just would prefer to leave it with the Board of Health as town meeting voted to do as part of the bylaw.
Okay. Um, so also that I had met with, um, with Darlene Coyle just before we had the policy adopted by the Board, uh, to have individuals looking for an extension to come before us. And I had supported the idea of having them actually come before us, partially because I, I don't think that we're going to get that many. At the time, we had one, uh, business that was actually interested in applying for the extension in the future. Um, I'm open to moving it if that's what the majority of the Board wants to do. I, I don't think we're going to get too many others and, uh, after a year, uh, we won't be able to get anymore anyway, actually after, um, six months. So, um, but if the Board wants to, to move, I'm fine with that as well. Um, is there anything else from Board members?
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, that I don't think it's up to the Board. Town meeting has spoken. They're a legislative body. They adopted the bylaw. The bylaw specifically designates the Board of Health. The Board of Selectmen is nowhere in there. So we don't have the legal authority to, according to the bylaw, to interact on this matter at all. I mean, certainly as a Board, we can communicate with the Board of Health or as individual members or members of the public, we can do so. But the bylaw is unequivocal in Section Four. They add the enforcement. They are, they are authorized to make policy. We are not. So I don't see where the Board has any ability to engage in this other than through an informal process or through a formal petition process to the Board of Health.
All right. Um, do we have anything from, um, I want to ask Darlene Coyle, if you, uh, have any reservations about bringing this up or anything down?
Good evening all. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, speak. Um, so for the, um, for the plastic bag bylaw, um, I do agree with you. I, um, I, I don't believe that we have, um, any other requests that have come through our office for, um, a waiver of plastic bags, um, requirement. And, um, I do understand, um, Mr. Carpenter is, uh, referring to under Section Four that we can adopt regulations, uh, to implement, enforce, and adhere to, uh, the section. Um, because, uh, it went through town meeting and because of the, um, the plastic bag requirement, uh, we wanted to make sure that we are on track for, uh, any, any exceptions that happen. So we did have that initial waiting request. Um, we, uh, to be clear, I have not received any other requests. Uh, we did give sway for the businesses. We did, um, as you may recall, um, notification, um, for the enactment bylaw, um, having it go into effect for October first. Um, also, uh, you know, trying to be, uh, um, friendly with the, um, the businesses as well. We've attended, um, Chamber of Commerce meetings, you know, um, engaged businesses by having, um, site visits, um, out in the community. Um, that's not saying that we come onto every business, but to, um, make sure that we have a connection, uh, with businesses, uh, to help them through this. Um, so again, I, I agree with Mr. Carpenter. I don't think that we will, um, see a lot of requests on this. I think a lot of businesses, um, should be applauded because they have, um, complied with it. Um, and certainly any, anybody that is still using plastic bags, um, we will attempt to provide education, um, and go through, um, the process to, uh, to bring them along. Um, as with any bylaw, um, or any, um, regulation, um, you know, it takes some time to transition where we need to be. So, um, town meeting was supportive of this bylaw. Um, I'm happy about it and our solid waste, um, advisory committee was, um, very supportive of it as well. So, uh, we will continue much forward to work with businesses. And if the, um, goal of the Board is to have it under the Board of Health, then, um, we will handle it under the Board of Health. That's what we're going to decide.
All right. Thank you. Um, I think the Board of Health had the ability to delegate or to give the Select Board the chance to approve the, uh, the extensions since giving extensions, providing extensions actually wasn't mentioned at all in the bylaw at all. So if we were going strictly from what was approved by town meeting, um, then there would not have been an extension granted at the last meeting. Um, that said, are there any other questions or comments? Is, does the majority of the Board feel that, uh, Board of Health should resume, um, hearings on if any other applicants come forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we refer all of this to the Board of Health per the Section 4 of the bylaw adopted in 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. There are eight, eight A town manager items. We have a board vote on approval of grant application for automated external deferred letter to accept and expend funds. So with that, I'll turn it over to the town manager. Members having their packets.
Through the chair, thank you. This is a grant that was, we were notified about approximately two weeks ago from the state for the hour funding available with a maximum of $2,500 for communities to apply for one D5 unit. And the fire department would like to submit the grant application. There's no required match and hopefully there is enough, my understanding is there's probably enough funding in that state funding to provide one per community. So we would just be looking for a vote to approve the grant applications, accept and expend the funds.
Great, thank you. Do board members have any? Oh. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Notice on certain municipal buildings closures to the public?
Through the chair, I'll be brief, I won't go through this, but just to remind the public, we did put out a public notice on January 3rd last week that beginning on January 5th running through January 29th, our town hall, senior center, and library would be closed to the public. All employees are working 100% of their normal schedules as they always have been, but due to the incredible spike in COVID numbers, we felt for everybody's safety, both the employees as well as the public, that we would be closing the buildings. So just a reminder, all that information is on our website. We have reopened our drive-through kiosk and the parking lot at town hall and we are restaffing it, which is what we're going to get to in the next item, actually, some of the other prevention measures that we're taking. And we have the treasure collector's outdoor service window open. That is at the back of town hall, up the handicap ramp for people who need to work with the treasure collector's office. Everything else could be done either online, by phones, or through the drive-through kiosk.
Do board members have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Request for approval of ARPA funds for urgent health needs.
Yes, so as, as all of this is changing rapidly across the country, as well as it is in Massachusetts and here in Auburn, our numbers are incredibly high. We have seen spikes the like of which we haven't seen since the start of this pandemic in March of 2020, which is one of the reasons that we're taking the precautions we're taking in our buildings. Again, I just want to encourage all of our boards and commissions, if you can possibly hold your public hearings and your public meetings 100% remotely, that's what we encourage. We do have an ascertaintment hearing, and I see Attorney Bill August is on the phone for an upcoming item, that will still be held with a hybrid option of remote and in person because it had to be put in the newspaper several weeks ago under the law. So we can't change that. So we will be here as we are tonight, should anyone come in, but we're highly recommending people not coming. That being said, we are seeking board approval for $50,000 in our ARPA funds for us to address urgent health needs that we anticipate over the next couple of months, primarily due to this spike. First of all, it has been brought to our attention from the state that communities in Massachusetts are now eligible to purchase testing kits only for their employees in order to keep our workers in the office and essential functions moving along. The cost, there is a minimum purchase that has to be made to purchase off the state bid list, and that minimum cost is $32,000 and that gets, the kits are approximately $26 apiece. We are still looking to see if we could purchase something less than that. Again, over a certain amount, we have to go to bid, which is why the state bid list is important. But if it's under that amount and we can find a vendor that has the type of kits that we want, we could save a considerable amount of money and purchase less kits. Just to give you an example, some of our departments have been using between eight and let's say 12 tests per week, and that was really before this spike hit. Some employees need to be tested twice in order to come back to work, some possibly even multiple times. So we can use these kits to make sure that we keep our essential workers, of which all of our town employees are essential workers. We have to keep treasury going, we have to keep payroll going, we have to keep our services going, our public safety, our public health, and our public works. So a good portion of that would be to purchase these tests. As you know, it's become extremely difficult to purchase tests. None of the retail outlets have many of them in stock and it's become a challenge for all of us. We've been leaving it up to the employees for the most part to go find their own tests. Of course, if an employee, you don't want employees going out to a retail store to purchase a test to make sure that they don't have COVID. So this would be an important expenditure for us to make. As you know, the ARPA funds primarily, the whole purpose of the ARPA funds is to address public health needs. And this is an urgent public health need that we have identified. The other part of that would be funding the staffing of the drive-through kiosk at least for the month of January. If we have to continue it, if the numbers continue the way they are, then we would look for funding for that as well. That's about, one month would be about $4,000, about $4,000. And then other public health urgent needs, including PPE, cleaning supplies, et cetera, these are all ARPA eligible. They're all urgent needs where we need to make these expenditures in the next four to eight weeks. We hope that the numbers start to go back down and we won't have to go beyond that. But for now, we're asking the board for approval for $50,000 for these public health needs.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, the motion's been made.
I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded for discussion, Mr. Carpenter?
Just a quick question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager. These tests, which I mean, I know are in the, are in at least public press as being very difficult to get, does it make sense to have a higher amount so that we can potentially have some in reserve rather than the $50,000, you know, purchase more tests in the, in the hope that you won't need it, but that we will have them in the case of a necessary amount?
Through the chair, it's a great question. We've been having that discussion today. We absolutely believe that we'd like to have some in reserve. It's very hard for us to know how many exactly we need. At $32,000 and Darlene correctly, I believe that gets us approximately 1,200 tests, somewhere in that area. We probably don't need all of them. We don't want to buy so many tests that the expiration date comes on before we have the opportunity to use them. So it is a fine line. If we need to get more tests, we have looked at doubling that, for instance, just to make sure we have enough on hand because there could be times where we need to have many more tests than what we've been seeing, in which case that $32,000 figure would be about $64,000. If the board wanted to give us, you know, a maximum even to just say, you know, instead of, we're asking for 50 because we're trying to be very conservative, if we asked for 75, we would only expend it if we needed it on the test. You raise a great point, Mr. Carpenter. Our fear also is if we don't buy enough tests and then there's a shortage and we can't get them, we're going to have another problem because we can't get our workers back into the workforce without the tests. But on the other hand, we don't want the expiration date to come before we get to use all the tests. So I think there's a fine line there that we kind of have to work our way through, but I would be, and I'm sure Darlene Coyle would be, very much more comfortable if the board would be willing to go a little higher. We would only use the funding if we needed it and we can certainly report to you on how much we've spent, expended on the test.
Mr. Chairman, I would support if Mr. Berthew would increase that to 75. I would support, I would support that amendment.
I'll amend my motion.
So I just want to get it right for what your motion is. So Mr. Berthew, the motion is for, to approve town administration to spend up to $75,000 from ARPA funds to staff the kiosk and purchase additional COVID tests.
That's correct.
All right, is there any other question or comment before we vote on the motion? Darlene, I see you raising your hand. Sure.
Thank you so much. So thank you for, for taking a look at this. Young, obviously, as Mr. Jacobson described, the test kit we are trying to seek right now, there's so many towns that are trying to do this all at the same time, so we're trying to use our, our collective. I guess our youth together with other towns to be able to figure this out. So I appreciate the, the offer to reset. And just, we just want to, again, for testing kits or anything that we're using for COVID response right now. Our ordering, believe it or not, we're actually going through a lot of masks, sanitizer gloves, anything that has with COVID-related response that we're using in the town buildings that can just give us a little leeway on that would be appreciated.
Okay, so Mr. Berthew, would you consider amending your motion to, to approve up the $75,000 from ARPA to staff the kiosk, purchase additional COVID tests and other essential PPE?
The motion was for them to extend what they thought was necessary for supplies. So that, you know, we're not going to go into details, so every time she has something different that she wants to buy, I don't need to know about that. So it's, you know, whatever supplies they need to fight COVID.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the wording in the motion right. So, so essential PPE supplies.
And other public health needs.
And other public health needs, okay. Chairman, did you? Awesome. Okay. So with that, are there any other questions or comments? I'll just say that I don't think we need to go up to the $75,000. I think I would have supported $50,000. I know it's only for what's going to be expended, but that's, I'd rather try to reserve as much of the ARPA funds as we have, as we can, while we're still trying to seek public input. But with that, so motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair votes no, so it passes three to one.
Thank you.
Through the chair, can I just ask a question?
Oh, sure.
We have, we have Deputy Fire Chief Glenn Johnson as the next item, and then we have Attorney Bill August as the item right after that. Would you mind asking if either of them have any type of time constraints to take one out of order or the other? I just don't know what their schedule is.
Sure, sure. I don't know, Bill and Glenn, have you heard that? Do either of you have any time constraints? I was just going in order since we had you both on here. But any time constraints that might want to move yours up?
We can move Mr. August up. I can wait, not a problem. I'm flexible, it's up to whatever is your pleasure.
Do you have a time constraint? I know you're here for the motion too. Okay. With that, I will ask that the board move up agenda item. What are we on, number eight? Discussing with Attorney William August on the cable license renewal. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Welcome, Bill. Thanks for coming in and talking to us. I know the board had some questions. I don't know if you want to give, talk initially about what the process might be like before we turn it over to board questions. I'll leave that up to you.
Thank you very much. The towns, cable license with Charter expires in June of 2023. So we're about 18 months away from expiration. And although that may seem like a long time away from now, under the federal cable law, we're required, if we go with the formal renewal process, to issue what's called the license renewal RFP five months before the expiration. So we're really looking at January of 2023, which is only 12 months away before, as of the time that we will have to make a decision about whether to go through the formal renewal process with an RFP or just go through informal negotiations. My recommendation is to go through the informal renewal process, as I've discussed with town manager, and avoid the issuance of an RFP. The cable act allows towns to either do informal negotiations or a formal process. The problem with the formal process is it's more expensive, it requires issuance of an RFP to the incumbent. So I want to stay with the informal process if we can. But in order to stay within the informal process, we'll have to know by January 2023 whether we have a satisfactory renewal negotiation. So what do we have to do right now in order to know whether we can, through the informal process? We're mandated by federal law to identify the town's needs through an ascertaintment process. You have to hold a public hearing to identify needs. It, that's very, it's a very simple concept, but really just going out to do our homework by identifying needs. That includes the hope of a public hearing first. So the town, with the committee and the town manager, have scheduled a public hearing, it's called an ascertaintment hearing to identify needs. That hearing is next week on January 18th. There's not a lot of heavy lifting at this hearing. It's fairly simple because the job of the party holding the hearing, cable committee, is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the cable needs of the town. So we want to dispose of that particular requirement. We also have to go through other tasks to identify the needs of the town, to have credible informal negotiations with Charter. Unless we go through certain tasks to show that we're doing our homework to identify needs, we don't have a lot of credibility at the negotiations table. And sometimes at the table, when we start negotiating, the company's more often than not, will say, well, what do you have for ascertaintment? What, what evidence do you have that you need that? So to establish some credibility and show due diligence, we do the public hearing. We've also done outreach to all town departments to identify their needs. Julie did, the town manager Jacobson did an excellent outreach to the department on that. The cable committee also has to do a compliance review, the existing license, to make sure as part of needs that the company is in compliance with the existing license. We are, most important in the ascertaintment of needs is the development of a credible itemized equipment budget, capital budget, which include equipment and capital facilities, investment from Charter, as well as operating budget. That's first and foremost what a town needs because that's, that's where the financial commitment come from in the renewal license. And there's a lot financially at stake for the town. The town currently receives a significant annual payment from Charter. We will actually have to negotiate to increase that payment somewhat. We will actually have to negotiate to increase that payment somewhat, based on the ascertaintment work that has been done to date, and based on the fact that the new owners of Charter, Spectrum LLC, do not agree to provide as much equipment funding in renewals as the old Charter did. So we have to offset that decrease in the capital funding by having stronger negotiations to increase the annual franchise fees, the peg access fees. Right now, I have draft budgets, itemized budgets on equipment needs and operating expenditures from Chris Ugo, and those have been circulated to the committee. That's a draft, provided some feedback on that. Currently, I'm waiting for revisions to those budgets to be implemented. So we often say the three most important things in the renewal negotiations are budgets, budgets, and budget, because while the verbiage is very important, and there are like a hundred and one things in a cable license, you know, restoration of streets, telephone answer time, electrical code lines, literal insurance requirements, performance bond, there are a hundred and one things. At the end of the day, the tasks have come to the head on the financial support, more than the other items. That's why I say the budgets are the most important thing. And thank you for working, I think it's working with Chris on updating those budgets, and we'll need those to sit across the table. That's called Phase One, the ascertaintment process, ascertaining needs. It's super simple conceptually, just identifying needs. There are a lot of technicalities to it, to make the ascertaintment documents credible, but that's all it is, conceptually. That's not an end in and of itself, that's just to get us ready for negotiations. That's where the rubber meets the road in negotiations, because nine out of ten times we resolve through informal negotiations, which we have to do by check, we have to know whether we're likely to. So we're just preparing for negotiations. Phase one is ascertaining, phase, and we want to finish that up in a couple of months. Phase two, negotiations of license. Spectrum uses a template, standardized license, it sends to the town, and then we mark it up. It's a lot more abbreviated than the old Charter licenses, so it's a negotiation process. There are a couple of hot items. You would think, hey, we've done this a couple of times in the past. Believe me, there's so many new things coming off down the pike, literally and metaphorically down the pike from Charter. This will be the first time Auburn will be able to attempt to negotiate getting a high-definition peg access channel, so we're trying to negotiate for that, and that's not easy. No Massachusetts town has gotten that from Charter. Comcast and Verizon have both provided HD tech channels in many of their renewals, so that's why we're trying to spend some time trying to get Charter to step up to the plate and do what Verizon and Comcast are doing. There are new federal rules on the counting of the payment, of what's paid to the town, completely new rules from the FCC. Under the current license, for example, Charter pays a full four and a half percent of its gross revenues to the town, but the FCC in two thousand and eighteen said that the company can count certain in-kind benefits towards the monetary value of four and a half percent. And the language Charter did in its draft licenses gives them full discretion to completely decide what they count towards the payments that are due to the town. So that has to be looked at legally, unfortunately. Charter also, the new Charter's spectrum, has completely new language that Charter never had, like escape clauses in the contracts to get out of their commitments if they face competition from non-licensed video service providers. Most Massachusetts towns are blithely signing the documents that have these level playing field clauses that allow Charter to terminate the license based on competition from unlicensed companies. But we have successfully changed Charter's position in two recent Spectrum renewals that I just represented, Grafton and Charlton, and the co-executed Spectrum renewals. So we have precedent for having town-friendly language in those areas of negotiations. Separate from the renewal, Town Manager Jacobson emphasized to me that this town, like all towns, wants competition. So we did what we fought for other towns, we picked up the phone, I called the top franchise people at Verizon, and they are not applying for new licenses. The only other cable company competing in Massachusetts is, on any scale, that could potentially involve going to Auburn in addition to Verizon, is RCN. They serve about twenty towns in Massachusetts, but they're only applying for initial licenses in towns continuous to existing systems, and they don't have any towns in this region. So we did some due diligence to try to roll out the red carpet to companies like Verizon and RCN that like to compete with incumbents, but they're not prepared to come out here. I won't say that the prospect of getting competition is dead. It's not promising in terms of competition from new, from cable companies, from the cable industry, but there are a lot of new technologies being developed, where there is a lot of venture capital and other kinds of entities that are trying to compete in the video marketplace. We have not been able to research that, and we're not aware of companies doing that in Massachusetts towns that have existing cable incumbents, but we have, that was a priority to the town manager to see if we could get some competition, based on what she heard from the selectmen about wanting competition. So in a nutshell, you know, we're doing the ascertaintment of needs, and we have a public hearing, and the public should know, we want, we're going to keep the ascertaintment record open, they can't submit written comments after the hearing. We have to identify needs in those major areas, and then we're going into negotiations. The Cable Committee is here to serve the board of selectmen, Cable Committee is merely advisory. Anything we do is subject to your review. If we negotiate X, Y, and Z, my mantra to the cable company is, we're only negotiating something so we can have something presentable to the board of selectmen, they're the issuing authority. So that's how we see it, and that's what we're doing.
All right, great. Thank you for that. Do board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Bertheum and Mr. Carpenter, I know you both had some questions the last time that we talked about this, and we actually took a vote, so I'll turn it over to board questions and comments.
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. August, for your presentation. It does, as someone who has never gone through this before, it's a bit of a jarring issue, but it sounds like it's in good hands. Thank you.
My pleasure. And very informal, you know, you can call me, you can schedule a call, Julie is in regular contact, and I'm available.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other comments, just to the administration?
Yes. Thank you for the chair. I just want to thank Attorney August, you probably can't see me, Bill, but thank you for all your guidance and your direction on this. This is a complex process, but it is one we've been through before, and we've been through it under the guidance of Attorney August, so we've developed a good partnership with him, and we're thrilled to have him as our attorney specific for this purpose. I also just want to thank and recognize Bill Sheebert, who's here tonight, because many of you can't see here, because we're all separated out today, but the chair of our local cable advisory committee is here as well, and this is, also, Bill has done this a couple of times as well. So this isn't new to Bill or the committee, and I think we're all prepared to move forward. We just wanted to make sure that we brought Attorney August here tonight, as you said, Mr. Chair. There were some questions of board members last time, as to the process, and why do we have to do it the way we're doing it, and are there any other things that we could do other than the process that we've already solved? So we just want to make sure we've answered all of your questions, and you're all comfortable with it. It's certainly nothing that ends this evening, nor does it end on January eighteenth with the hearing that's really actually the start of the public process, so we can continue to keep you informed, and if you have any questions, you can route them through me, and I can get them to Attorney August and get answers back for you.
Sure, great, thank you.
I'll just say one closing point, less about the legal aspect, I'll just close on this. Just looking back at these renewals over the years, in many of the towns, these local channels have become very interesting sources of local programming and have grown in importance. You know, they started as little startups, they've come a long way. It's different from every town, but overall, what I am hearing is they, you know, they're doing more municipal meeting coverage, they're doing more local sports coverage, high school sports, whatever, and they've grown into a more central role. That's why at renewal, kind of the main reason, that there's more demand for that, and there are higher expectations for that. We do want to make sure they get at least level funding relative to where they were last time, because if your needs increase, you have to have at least the budget you had last time. The main area of pushback is because while our needs are growing, the cable companies are actually losing subscribers each year through the cord cutting. So they're coming at it from a place of, you know, they're trying to push back, and we're trying to get them to see that this is more important than ever, especially with the pandemic, we see how this telecommunications infrastructure, it's like a lifeline for different niches of activity. So that's just sort of my non-legal, big-picture comment. It's become very interesting, and so the selectmen have said, you're not alone, the selectmen, they see this once every ten years, so how are they supposed to know these ins and outs? But it's an interesting process to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. August. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming in tonight to talk to us and give us a better explanation. I just wanted to say that, before you mentioned it, I didn't know that Turner had put in some of their contracts that they could terminate if we brought in competition, and obviously, since we want competition, that's not something that we want to see in this one, so thanks for bringing that to our attention also.
Yeah, that's one of the most important clauses in the whole thing. They are allowed to negotiate to get to a level playing field with the competition, but not to terminate the way we wrote it.
Right, good. Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, is there anything that you want to add before?
Happy New Year, all. Goodbye.
All right, all right. Happy New Year, thank you.
Sure.
All right, back to our regular agenda. We have a discussion on the Fire Rescue Department COVID impacts, and Deputy Chief Glenn is on. Glenn, thank you for going out of order, I appreciate that.
You're welcome anytime. Good evening. I just wanted to speak to everybody, just want to let everybody know that the chief is on vacation, and I speak for the chief, we are in complete agreement with the conversation that I'm about to have. And our discussion is really staffing, staffing for the Auburn Fire Rescue Department. This year is our busiest year on record, and I feel like every time either the chief or my boss speaks to guys, we let you know that this is the busiest year. However, this year, we are twenty percent above our call volume last year, for over forty-five hundred calls for the year in two thousand twenty-one. And just to give you an average, we run nine people per shift, and all the departments that run the forty-five hundred calls plus like we have, they have anywhere between thirteen and fifteen people on shift with a minimum of eleven people. And I know lately with COVID, COVID has impacted everybody, certainly the burnout rate with our staff, unfortunately morale is low, they're at the breaking point with a lot of things, they're going from call to call, and the calls are a little bit different right now. They have to take the extra precautions, they get in a tieback suit, they go, they do the call, they get to the hospital, the hospital, the support staff, there's longer wait times at the hospitals, so now an ambulance is sitting at the hospital for an hour just waiting for bed to give a patient. They come back, they have to decontaminate the ambulances, they wash, they take a shower in between, and then they get dressed in a new uniform, washing their other uniforms, and they repeat it all over again. That's on top of just the calls being busier. Auburn, over the years, has grown, we see over five hundred thousand motor vehicles going through the town of Auburn every day. We border a city. We have a very busy call volume. Between police and fire, we are extremely busy. It's not uncommon to have both our ambulances out of town transporting people all the time, it's multiple calls. Since the time I've worked here, I've been working in Auburn for twenty-seven years. In call volume, in regards to calls, it always seems like there's multiple calls going on at the same time. And that percentage, it's forty percent of the time that we have one call, we're going to be having another call back-to-back with it. So the days of doing only a few calls or so for a shift are well over. We are very much bursting at our seams in regards to staff, and we're looking to do some things to try to help them out. Looking at potentially, looking at some impact shifts, maybe helping the staff from twelve-hour shifts, Monday through Friday, or even seven days a week, just to try to alleviate that burden by putting up a third ambulance, which would help the current staff so that they're not as broken down. Currently, it's very rare to even see them get to eat lunch on time. Most of the time, I see them maybe eat lunch around four o'clock, they might have a chance to get a break. But our busiest peak hours are eight AM to eight PM, and that's where we're looking to try to, at this time, a short-term solution would be to try to get some impact shifts. Now, I know that comes at a cost, and that's something we're working with town management on. And the other thing we're looking at with town management is a long-term plan of how can we address the staffing needs of the department, how can we get us to where we need to be? The union has provided the town with a letter of their concerns in regards to staffing, and we're looking at that, and we're looking at potentially doing a staffing study, working once again with town management to figure out a funding source of how we're going to do a staffing plan. The other avenues we're looking at is the SAFER grant, which I know some of you may be familiar with, we currently have two employees that are on the SAFER grant. Well, that is back up for renewal again this year, and I'd be looking to get potentially some more employees on that, that is a longer process. The closing period on that grant is February fourth, so we're looking to try to apply for that, so that we can maybe get some additional staff and have the federal government pay for a percentage of that. Do you have any questions at this time? I have a few more things, but I'll take some questions.
Board members have any questions? Seeing none, go ahead.
No questions. I guess I'm just here looking for your support, wanting to let you know that the staff of Fire Rescue Department is working very hard through this pandemic, and they're constantly going day in, day out, and at this time, I'd like to see the staff get some additional staffing so that we can answer the calls properly and not burn our current staff out.
All right, do board members have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Mr. Bertheum?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bertheum, can you hear me? Hold on.
Unmuted.
Yeah, Mr. Bertheum?
First of all, I'd like to thank the deputy chief for coming in and speaking with us to that, and also thank all the police officers and firefighters that are definitely putting in a lot of long hours and tough hours these days. You certainly have my support for anything that we can do within our budget, anything that we can do, you know, to go out and seek other funding, to see if we can get more help for you. Is there anything that we can do through District Seven where, I know obviously every town has their own protocols and things like that, but where we can utilize other departments' personnel, or is that something that the liability is too high?
Unfortunately, that's really not something that we'd be able to do. There is a plan in place in case departments develop COVID throughout their whole department, but that's not, I know that's not what you're talking about. Most of the other departments are in the same situation as us, they're calling Their call volumes have increased, they do not have enough staff. A societal issue is that people don't want to be firefighters, people don't want to be police officers. So there's staffing shortages on that end as well to find highly qualified individuals. So it would be very tough to take somebody from another department or share that resource because they're already hurting themselves.
Thank you. You know, and certainly I'm sure our town management is happy to, you know, take under advisement any suggestions that you have to, you know, to help out with the current staffing, to see if we can get them some, you know, extra rest or, you know, coverage. So whatever we can do, please bring it forward.
Unmuted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Carpenter?
unmuted.
Through you two, whoever can answer this. Certainly I associate myself with Mr. Berthium's comments. We know it's a difficult job under the best of circumstances. Throw in a global pandemic that doesn't seem to want to abate and I'm sure everybody is afraid, especially with, depending on what their spouses are doing and things of that nature. So there's certainly no lack of concern or support for that. If you were fortunate enough to get a SAFER grant, I guess my question is, in that you identify, you know, there's a shortage of people who want to run into danger. Even if you were successful, what is the timeframe to bring those staff on? I'm assuming they would have to go through the academy, that takes a period of time.
unmuted.
So if we were able to find some individuals, typically we'd like to get somebody that is already academy trained and get kind of what's called a lateral transfer from another department so that speeds it up, so that we have somebody already trained. The advantage that Auburn has, compared to some of the smaller towns, is we are a very busy system and a lot of people want to come to a busy system and we're slightly larger. So that helps us, but otherwise, yes, they have to go to the academy and get trained. It takes a good year for somebody to, once we hire them, if they have no training, to get them up to speed where we need them to be.
And just as a follow-up, if I could, and I know I've discussed this with the chief as part of the public safety, proposed public safety complex. Is there any ability to have, I know we don't necessarily want private ambulance service in the town. We've had a history with that, you know, that I'm sure other people can speak more intelligently on than I can. But is that something that the town could consider to alleviate that strain? Is that part of the mix?
In my opinion, I would say no. The privates, besides a few points, the private ambulance companies at this point are struggling with staff themselves. They currently are having a difficult time even backing up to the city of Worcester. I don't think that would be a viable option. On top of it, the ambulance revenue that we do bring in does offset our budget by a decent amount every year, which allows us to have cross-staffing so that you get high-quality ambulance service and a high-quality fire department as well. So in my opinion, I do not think that's the right option to go, but I do understand looking at all directions.
unmuted.
Other questions or comments from board members? I've seen them. Glenn, I had a couple. So I was wondering if there's any way to utilize volunteers in the department, you know, more on-call or actual just volunteers, unpaid people in the public that might be able to help out with anything that's obviously non-dangerous, that's just clerical, if there's any need there or any potential help that you could get in that end? Is there any, anything that someone else could help with that may not have the qualifications needed to do the real heavy lifting?
Unfortunately, what we really do need is we need trained individuals, trained paramedics and firefighters and with our model, we can use them to cross-staff, which helps for both the fire and the EMS end, so you kind of get a job out of it. As far as the volunteer end of things, it's very difficult getting call firefighters and volunteers. We did have them over time and slowly to nutrition. Other jobs that did go out. But we look at our neighboring departments that have had call firefighters and their numbers are starting to drop off as well. And I know from a town management perspective, there was also an insurance issue in regards to call firefighters. So I don't believe at this time that would be an option, but it's something we could look into.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering if there's any way we could get more people down to help. And yeah, I know I've talked to the chief about, you know, on-call firefighters in the past. And weirdly enough, I noticed that some of the other communities, Milbury and Lester at least, require the on-call to live in town. So I know that that's not an option for us is to expand it outwards, but I would think that the other departments would start to pull people from adjacent communities if possible. I agree with Mr. Berthium, you know, whatever we can do to try to help you guys out because I imagine burnout is tremendous right now, especially with cases skyrocketing. So anything we can do to try to help. Unfortunately, that was my only question right now is if we can get volunteers down there to help you. But certainly open to any other ideas that come up.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you. Before I close, is there anything else from town administration or any other board members?
Through the chair, if I may. Thank you, Deputy Chief. We appreciate you updating the board. This is similar information that we received when we met with the chief and the deputy chief almost two weeks ago and then again last week with some of the firefighters as well. It's a concern. We recognize that there's a cost to the town. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
unmuted.
Yours through that also. I don't know. I wasn't sure. I was muted to try to keep it, but yeah, it might be.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I just want to thank Deputy Chief Johnson for this update tonight. Ed and I had met with the chief and the deputy chief and then last week we met with the deputy chief and some of the firefighters and fire officers because we want to hear what some of the issues are that they're going through. And this is a concern. We recognize that there is a cost to the town for this. So that's what we need to really focus our efforts on. How do we provide the continued quality level of services from the Fire Rescue Department while maintaining the balance of the cost? And at some point, I think we all need to recognize that there is a cost to it. And if we can utilize the ambulance revenues to offset that cost or even neutralize some of that cost. As Deputy Johnson said, we're not able to respond to all of the calls. So we have to have mutual aid come in. Likewise, we have mutual aid going out. So that really, there's been an analysis done on that. The board had asked that question before. There pretty much is a wash. What comes in is going out in mutual aid. But the fact is, our Fire Rescue Department, they're not getting any breaks in between. So whether the impact shifts would help reduce that burden, we need to continue that conversation if that's a viable way to handle this situation, at least temporarily, until we get a more long-term plan. And that's certainly something that we are looking at right now. We're looking at funding sources, what's out there, is there anything out there? And how can we make this happen? As the deputy chief said, we support a plan, looking at an analysis and then developing a long-term plan based on that analysis of what staffing levels are required to maintain the level of service that this community expects and this community deserves. And I just want to say that I think the Fire Rescue Department does an outstanding job throughout, that they always have, but now you add in the enhanced layer of COVID and the impacts on the operations that COVID has had, it's just unbelievable. Their numbers were rising prior to COVID. We saw increased call volume every year, but it's just gone up. As the deputy chief has said, it's, you know, there were changes in society, changes in the way people work. People were working at home, they're not in their offices. When they're at home, they're going to call us. When they're in their office, they call the community with the office that they're in. Things have changed and things, even post-COVID, we anticipate that these numbers will still be going up. But we think a study would be a great way to do an analysis of what we have, what we think we're going to need, and then develop that long-term plan. So as the deputy chief said, in the short term, we'd like to apply for the SAFER grant and under the same conditions that we did a couple of years ago, we thought we could get the application in for February 4th and then we can continue to have the discussions, continue to look at the study and then see what our long-term needs are. These SAFER grants take many, many months to process and to even find out if we're going to get the grant. And at a certain point, if indeed we're awarded the grant and we don't need everything we applied for, we don't have to accept all of it. We can go at a level somewhere less than that. So I think that would be one of our first steps. We're going to get that SAFER grant in the next two weeks into the federal government.
Thank you. Is there anything else? And do you want us to, I guess, take a motion on the SAFER grant tonight?
If the board would like to take a motion, you could, just to authorize us to apply for the SAFER grant. You don't have to, at this point, vote to expend or accept because we don't even know how much we're going to apply for or how long that's going to take. But we would like to just go forward, even just a vote of support to pursue it for now, with the understanding, as we did last time, we would come back in with the final amount that we applied for, further discussion on whether we need all of it, we need more of it, but we don't want to miss that deadline.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to support going forward with applying for the SAFER grant or any other grant that could add personnel or funding for the Fire Department.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I would just ask that if the board would also consider, and if you would consider including a letter from the board to the state delegation, letting them know about the problems and asking if there's any way that they can lend support, either through trying to find more state funding or just so that they're aware of the problem as well. That's something that I'd like to include. I don't know if board members have any thoughts on that.
Do you want that as part of the motion or do you want to make it a separate motion?
It's up to you how you want to do it. It doesn't matter to me either if you want to do two different motions.
You can make it as part of that motion. I'll add that to the motion.
Thank you. So motion's been amended. Mr. Ruffley, do you still second?
Yes, I'll second, yes.
For the chair, could I recommend that you make that a letter or at least an OHS to state delegation as well as a federal delegation? Because the grant that we're going to be applying for, the SAFER grant, is federal. So we would want to reach out, which we would anyway, to Congress and the government. But it would be nice if we could let the Congress know that the board supports this application.
Okay. So Mr. Berthium, will you also add that?
Yes.
And Mr. Ruffley?
Yes.
All right. With that, motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mr. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Thank you, Deputy Johnson. I appreciate you coming in and sharing with us, you know, what's going on and we really appreciate it and hopefully we can find some way to help you out.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Do you want to mute mine while you're...
Oh.
Do you want to mute mine because I don't think it gives off some sound?
I think, oh, oh, no. So I think that our mics, what I was doing was muting mine while you were talking. But then I wasn't sure now we were sharing the same one, so I'll just leave it.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Your tabled items, we have none. Select board member items, this is the continued discussion of potential vote on Chapter 53, Section 18. I had asked us not to take a vote at our last meeting because we were down a member, excuse me, and now we're down a member again. So if, I know Mr. Runn had let us know how he was planning to vote in the last meeting, but I guess I'll hold off and ask until we have a full board to actually take any action on that item, if that's all right with everyone else. All right. So with that, we have the minutes from November 8th, 2021. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, I'll accept them as read. Is there a motion to, is there anything else actually first from anyone on the board?
I make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? By a roll call vote?
Second.
Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Good night, everyone.